With twenty-eight delegations in the Hall of the Americas, we are pleased to confirm that we have quorum to proceed.
Good morning, His Excellency, the Honorable Frederick A. Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, distinguished permanent and interim representatives of the member states, Ambassador Nestor Mendez, Assistant Secretary General, distinguished permanent observers, ladies and gentlemen. I am pleased to declare open this protocolary meeting of the Permanent Council, which has been approved and convened for the purposes of commemorating Pan American Day and Pan American Week. The order of business is so approved. Approved. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all of you who are here today to join us in this important celebration. I'd like to pay a particular welcome to Ambassador Wendell K. Jones, Bahamas Ambassador of the United States, Ambassador of the Bahamas to the United States, my apologies, and Ms. Kimberly Furnish, Director of the American Citizen Services and Crisis Management of the United States State Department, and Mr. Michael P. Taylor, Deputy Director of the Office of Caribbean Affairs of the Department of State. Esteemed colleagues, the observance of Pan American Day and Pan American Week holds profound significance for the nations of the Western Hemisphere. Pan American Day marks the anniversary of the first international conference of American States in eighteen ninety. This pivotal event led to the creation of the International Union of Americas and American Public, the very foundation upon which our esteemed Organization of American States stands. It serves as a powerful reminder of our longstanding commitment to regional unity and cooperation. However, Pan American Day is more than just a historical marker. It is a vibrant celebration of the immense diversity that defines the Americas, a distinguished tapestry woven from unique cultures, languages, and ethnicities which engenders our hemispheric rich heritage. Pan American Week allows us to acknowledge this diversity and highlight the common threads that bind us together. Pan American Day and Week undoubtedly serves as a platform for strengthening partnerships between and among our nations. Governments, businesses, and cultural institutions work collaboratively to promote trade, education, and cultural exchange through hosting cultural events like musical festivals, food fairs, and art exhibits. This fosters a more integrated and collaborative hemispheric environment where we can all learn and grow from each other. Throughout this week, we must also acknowledge the shared challenges that confront the Americas. Since its inception in nineteen forty-eight, the OAS has faced and responded to challenges to democracy, economic disparity, gender inequality, constantly evolving security threats, and climate change. The Organization, its member states, and partners continue to respond to regional threats, all for the betterment of the hemisphere and lives of its citizens. On Pan American Day and Week, we are given a valuable opportunity to discuss these issues openly and collaboratively. By working together, we can develop solutions that ensure greater hemispheric resilience and stability. Furthermore, through these exchanges, stereotypes diminish and empathy grows. Pan American Day and Week fosters people-to-people connections, building bridges of understanding and respect that will benefit the entire region. The OAS is firmly committed to advancing development, bolstering security, and upholding democracy and human rights throughout the Americas. Pan American Day and Week serves as potent reminders of these core values, encouraging member states to build more inclusive and sustainable economies, provide safe and secure communities for our citizens, strengthen democratic institutions, and promote individual liberties to ensure a more just and equitable future for all. This week is not just about celebrating the present, but also about investing in the future. The young people of the Americas hold the promise of a brighter tomorrow. Through engaging events and programs and organized Pan American Week, we foster a sense of hemispheric identity in our youth. We prepare them to become future leaders who will champion hemispheric cooperation for generations to come. Let us all use this week as a time for reflection. By acknowledging past triumphs and past challenges, we can gain valuable lessons that will guide us as we charter a more prosperous and peaceful future for all nations of the Americas. The needs of this region extend far beyond the four walls of this historical building. I therefore challenge us to aspire for an Americas fit for its diverse citizenry. We must reaffirm our collective commitment to building a future where the Americas can prosper as a united and vibrant region. Together, let us use this week to celebrate our shared heritage, address our common challenges, and build a stronger, more unified future for the Americas. I thank you for your kind attention. Now it is my pleasure to offer the floor to the OAS Assistant Secretary General, Ambassador Nestor Mendez, to address this council. Ambassador Mendez, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. His Excellency, the Honorable Frederick A. Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, Ambassador Chet Niemeyer, Chair of the Permanent Council and Permanent Representative of the Bahamas to the OAS, distinguished permanent and interim representatives of member states, distinguished permanent observers, ladies and gentlemen. Today we gather to recall the auspicious date of April the fourteenth, nineteen eighty ninety, marking the conclusion of the first Pan American Conference and the creation of the International Union of the American Republics, the predecessor of the Pan American Union and the OAS. It is a date that also marks the beginning of the journey towards the creation of the Inter-American System. Permit me to take a look back at history. It was on May seventh, nineteen thirty, that the Governing Board of the Pan American Union designated April the fourteenth as Pan American Day. That same year, Herbert Hoover, President of the United States, issued a proclamation calling upon schools, civic associations, and people of the United States to observe the day with ceremonies celebrating the friendship and unity among the people of the Americas. Subsequent U.S. presidents and leaders have continued to acknowledge the vital role of our organization in engendering peace and security within and among the nations of our hemisphere. As we gather today, we must also recognize the significant role of the United States as host country to our organization and as a valuable collaborative partner in the execution of our work through the permanent mission of the United States. They have worked assiduously in planning the activities of this week's commemoration. As we reflect on our shared journey, we remain ever cognizant that it is a path replete with innumerable triumphs in maintaining peace and order by thwarting potential contentious military and political situations. I must also acknowledge that this has indeed been a winding road upon which our best political intentions have been curtailed by the political, economic, and social differences amongst us. In spite of these challenges, we have persevered and forcefully confronted these obstacles by harnessing our shared values and buttressing our collective interests in fulfilling the four pillars of our organization: democracy, human rights, integral development, and multidimensional security. The Americas is no doubt a tremendous space, as richly diverse in both its geography and culture, yet at the same time inherently unique, spanning the dense tundras of Canada in the North to the epic landscapes of Tierra del Fuego in the South and encompassing the pristine waters of the Caribbean in between. Our hemisphere's distinct music, gastronomy, and art are testimony to the many civilizations which have traversed its terrain and continue to form the tapestry of our hemisphere's vibrant culture, which binds us together as one. Indeed, to fully understand the Americas, we must fully embrace its diversity, history, and its peoples. The soft power of culture has played a vital role throughout our history. Chilean artist Roberto Mata describes the role of culture in diplomacy in his Verbo Americas print series. According to Mata, "The artists of the different nations of the Americas have broken down borders sooner than the politicians and the military. It is a sign of a continental consciousness." One of the marquee events for this year's celebration of Pan American Day is titled "Promoting Social Equity and Diplomacy for Peace Through Cultural and Jazz Diplomacy", and it is a direct reflection of the sentiment expressed by Mata. Ladies and gentlemen, the OAS has long been at the vanguard of cultural diplomacy through a vast array of programs that have bridged our differences. As the world's oldest regional organization, the OAS has given birth to notable initiatives that continue to play a seminal role in diplomacy in this hemisphere. Through the Columbus Memorial Library and the Art Museum of the Americas, the OAS stands out as a political beacon of utilizing culture to unify our region. Our bespoke cultural programs have sought to create international understanding, cooperation, friendship, and peace. Past efforts included the Music Division, the Art Division, the Inter-American Festivals of Washington, The Voice of the Americas, and the Pan American Bulletin Americas Magazine. Sadly, many of these initiatives fell victim to the harsh budgetary crisis we continue to face. However, the Art Museum of the Americas continues to serve as an inter-American treasure and a visual kaleidoscope of artistic expression. The Columbus Memorial Library, which dates back to our creation, remains as the singular repository for our rich historical records and the source for continued research, archive, and knowledge. Like our organization, the rich history that permeates our building is awe-inspiring. Our General Secretariat main building, such a prominent fixture in Washington, D.C., was recently elevated in this city's importance by being included into the renowned Registry of National Historical Landmarks of the Department of the Interior, cementing its undeniable legacy and stature in the Americas. Today's celebration provides a propitious opportunity to reflect on the journey to this moment, the tireless diplomatic and political strides undertaken throughout the years to construct an edifice which transcends our individual countries and underpins our collective identities and shared history. The lofty ideals first envisioned a hundred and thirty-four years ago of creating a truly equitable and inclusive hemisphere still hold true today as we continue to work toward these goals for our hemisphere.
Señoras y señores, nuestra organización también se ha destacado por la creación de instrumentos jurídicos que promueven los valores compartidos de democracia, dignidad humana y libertad, tal como pensó José Martín. Un ejemplo es la Convención Interamericana contra el racismo, la discriminación racial, y formas conexas de intolerancia, aprobada por la Asamblea General en el dos mil trece. A través de programas culturales con significado político, la Secretaría General, desde mi oficina, ha realizado e institucionalizado programas como la Semana Interamericana de los y las afrodescendientes. Esta semana fue establecida a través de resolución de este foro en el dos mil dieciocho, después de la adopción del Plan de Acción de los y las afrodescendientes de las Américas en el dos mil dieciséis, y tiene el objetivo de fomentar la reflexión sobre los problemas socioeconómicos que enfrentan las personas afrodescendientes, así como elogiar sus contribuciones al desarrollo de nuestras Américas. De igual manera, alrededor del nueve de agosto de cada año celebramos, con varias actividades incluyendo algunas culturales, la Semana Interamericana de los Pueblos Indígenas. Los programas de esta semana destacan los importantes logros que surgen de la Declaración Americana sobre los Derechos de los Pueblos Indígenas, adoptada por la OEA en junio del dos mil dieciséis para reconocer, promover, y proteger los derechos fundamentales de los setenta millones de pobladores indígenas de las Américas. Este año, en reconocimiento del Día de las Américas, Pan American Day, se han organizado una serie de paneles de discusión, conciertos, y exhibiciones. Esto incluye la presentación del libro por la autora Marie Arana el dieciséis de abril, el panel y concierto "The Lasting Impact of the Jazz Ambassadors Program in the Americas", el dieciséis de abril, la presentación de la película de Jazz Ambassadors, el veinticuatro de abril, el panel y concierto "Cultural Diplomacy for Realizing Social and Racial Equity and Inclusive Governance", el treinta de abril, y el concierto de jazz del U.S. Army Blue, el dos de mayo. Antes de concluir, los invito a que disfruten las dos exposiciones en el edificio principal. Una está en la antesala del Simón Bolívar y se titula "Celebrando el Día de las Américas 2024: Promover la Equidad Social a través de la Diplomacia Cultural", y la otra titulada "Jam Session: Americas Jazz Ambassadors Embrace the World" se encuentra en la galería Marcus Garvey. A mí me llamó especialmente la atención la fotografía de los destacados músicos Louis Armstrong, Woody Harman, Sarah Vaughan, siendo entrevistados en la antigua voz de las Américas de la OEA. Para concluir, permítanme citar esta estrofa del poema "Hoda a las Américas" de Pablo Neruda. Américas purísimas, tierras que los océanos guardaron, intactas y purpúreas, siglos de colmenares silenciosos, pirámides, vasijas, ríos de ensangrentadas mariposas, volcanes amarillos, y razas de silencio formadores de cántaros, labradores de piedra. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for your words, Assistant Secretary General, on this important commemoration. Next, I have the distinct honor of inviting an international relations virtuoso, the Honorable Frederick A. Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. Minister Mitchell will bring remarks. I now invite you, Minister Mitchell, to bring remarks to the council.
Thank you very much, Ambassador, and good morning to everyone, Excellencies all. The Assistant Secretary General, it's good to be back here in this hall. I guess this is the second time this year, and I'm happy you started off talking about culture because we have our Director of Culture sitting at the back. I'm sure she'd be very heartened by that, and part of my mission here today is actually to try and bring Jean Canoe to Broadway, so we're going to see a theater after we leave here today to try and move that project along. So you have a true believer in me. But it is a special honor, as I said, to join you all today, and I would like to pay tribute to those who were my predecessors in this job. This is the third time for me in this job since my first appointment in two thousand and two. And so I'd just like to pay tribute to them who were at this podium before me, Sir Lyndon Pinley, who is the founder of our country, Mr. Paul Adley, if I called him sir, he would turn in his grave, Sir Clement Maynard, Sir Charles Carter, Dame Janet Bostwick, Sir Orville Turnquest, Mr. Brent Semenit, Mr. Darren Headfield, who is my immediate predecessor, and of course myself. So there've been nine of us altogether who've served since joining the OAS. And it's a pleasure and honor to be here in the House of Americas to celebrate Pan American Day and Week, and more broadly, the enduring Pan American spirit that is characterized by a shared yearning among the newly sovereign former colonies of the hemisphere for true liberty and equality and for diplomatic, economic, social, and political cooperation to build a new and better Americas. It is a spirit that was first perhaps animated by the Haitian and American revolutions of the late eighteenth centuries, driven by the just cause of the pursuit of freedom from the tyranny of a colonizing foreign minority and for realization of liberty, equality, and sociopolitical inclusion for all citizens. And I pause here to recognize the immense debt that there is still owed to the Haitian people, who led the largest and most successful slave revolt that founded for the first time a new society to be ruled by a black majority that would be free of slavery but who also, at proverbial gunpoint, were forced to repay former French slaveholders for their loss of free labor, which hobbled the nascent independent country's capacity to develop well into the mid-twentieth century. Unlike the Haitian people know all too well, progress in the Americas has not been linear. Over the past few centuries, the hemisphere has faced critical setbacks due to wars, transnational crime, the scourge of racism, and other human rights atrocities, and the rise of authoritarianism. However, the indomitable spirit of Pan Americanism has proved to be one characterized by persistence and striving towards, as the OAS Charter prescribes, an historic mission to offer to man a liberty, and that must include women, and a favorable environment for the development of his or her personality and the realization of his or her just aspirations. It is a legacy that drove Simon Bolivar on his pursuit of the freedom of the New World with the convening of the Congress of Panama, and this legacy runs like an unbroken thread through the series of inter-American conferences convened over the nineteenth and twentieth centuries that built the tenets of the inter-American system and led to the creation of the International Union of the American Republics here in Washington, D.C., which we celebrate today as the precursor to this August organization. Ours is a hemisphere with a uniquely interwoven history and culture. By and large, we all share a heritage informed by African, indigenous, and Western colonial influences. This shared history and culture serves as the foundation for the credo of Pan Americanism, which seeks to preserve and expand hemispheric solidarity within the context of the notion of good neighborliness and pacific settlement of disputes. Over time, the tenets of Pan Americanism have expanded to incorporate respect for the rule of law and fundamental human rights and the primacy of representative democracy as a form for structuring political engagement in our societies. For many former colonies of the hemisphere, we've come a long way from the state-sanctioned dehumanization of Black and indigenous bodies that was the order of the day just a few generations ago. Unlike the contagious influence of liberation movements that first sparked Pan American ideals in the eighteenth century, the social justice movements of the twentieth century spurred a wave of newly independent CARICOM countries seeking membership in the OAS, which has added new dimensions to Pan Americanism and to the complexion of the inter-American system. Here, work still remains to ensure full integration of new estates, like my country, the Bahamas, into the OAS and other bodies of the inter-American system. With its four working languages and the required dual-language proficiency, attention may be paid to implement language training, especially for non-Spanish-speaking member states to allow for an OAS that better represents the entire region. I identify with this because I've sat around dinners, social functions, and I'm the only one that doesn't speak Spanish, and I regret having not taken Spanish classes when I was in high school. I chose Latin instead, that was very useful. This responsibility, though multilingualism, should be an objective of the OAS, and I include also French and Dutch, particularly since about thirty percent of the Bahamian population speaks Creole as a first language. Work remains, then, to better reflect CARICOM priorities and people within the inter-American institutions. A broader, more representative Pan Americanism must also encompass a commitment to collaboration for sustainable development and building economic and environmental resilience and ensuring full inclusion and equality for persons of African descent and indigenous persons within our societies. Now, over the past century, however, there've been real pioneering achievements as a result of the collective work of developing and expanding the inter-American system, including the creation of the Pan American Health Organization, which predated the World Health Organization by more than forty years, and its successes with fostering technical cooperation to eliminate polio and smallpox in the Americas, cutting infant mortality, and most recently the coordination of COVID vaccine distribution; the founding of the Inter-American Economic and Social Council, and the Inter-American Council for Education, Science, and Culture more than seventy-five years ago, and the subsequent establishment of the IDB as the first regional multinational development bank; the formation of the Inter-American Commission of Women, the world's first intergovernmental agency established almost a century ago to ensure the recognition of women's human rights; the development of the Inter-American Human Rights System, including the Inter-American Juridical Committee, the Inter-American Commission on Human Rights, the Inter-American Court of Human Rights, the American Declaration of the Rights and Duties of Man, which is the world's first general international human rights instrument and which included novel concepts such as the right to education, the right to social security, the right to leisure, right to protection of mothers and children, the right to culture, and the right to the inviability of the home. And then there's the landmark Inter-American Treaty of Reciprocal Assistance for Collective Regional Defenses, and through the defining characteristics of the OAS as a group of states committed to the indispensability of representative democracy as enshrined in the OAS Charter, and the subsequent adoption of the Inter-American Democratic Charter, which all of our countries are bound to and which asserts that the peoples of the Americas have a right to democracy and their governments have an obligation to promote and defend it. Ours, therefore, is a hemisphere that leads and that has demonstrated time and again a capacity to rise to the moment and to collaborate on innovative and ambitious solutions for shared challenges. Ours also is a hemisphere rich in culture and diversity, from the syncopation of rap and jazz and blues in the North to the joyful rhythms of reggae and Jean Canoe and soca in the Caribbean, and the vibrancy of salsa, samba, and tango in the South. Our music, our food, our art, and our beautiful climbs comprise a lavish tapestry which serves as the envy of the world. And it is the OAS and the tools of the inter-American system that serve, that serve, as the indispensable connective tissue, facilitating our modern efforts to collaborate on building the Americas we want and on fully leveraging the dynamism of the hemisphere. It is not all sunny in the Americas, of course. Nothing in life is perfect. Ours is also a hemisphere where deep-rooted structural challenges remain. We are among the most unequal and most violent parts of the world, and there are increasingly worrying signs of demarcity. of democratic backsliding and undermining of basic human rights and equality in many of our countries. We continue to contend with old challenges such as the risk of conflict from regional border disputes. And here, I reiterate our hemisphere's professed commitment to respect for sovereignty and territorial integrity, the rule of law, and the virtue of preserving the hemisphere as a zone of peace. We also must confront new challenges such as the existential risk of climate change and natural disasters, and the threat to democracy from clandestine disinformation campaigns and digital illiteracy. Our brothers and sisters in Haiti require urgent support to stabilize and reconstruct Haiti into a country that they deserve. And if we look towards our inter-American institutions, they too require renewal in order to ensure that they are fit for purpose for the modern Americas. Despite the routine profession of our appreciation for the OAS, our talk as member states has not often matched our actions. As we continue to underfinance the OAS, particularly in relation to the proliferation of mandates that we generate for it, many of our countries have adopted a laissez-faire approach to meeting our financial obligations as member states in a timely and fulsome fashion. As a result, the capacity of the OAS in recent years to deliver on mandates has been constrained, and in some cases, has been severely compromised. We see this, for example, in the decline in regular financing afforded to OAS scholarships, which has historically been a flagship OAS program. The, this needs to change. In the face of the emerging challenges facing the Americas, the OAS and other institutions within the inter-American system continue to face a question of relevancy and impact. Driven by the key metric of weather, OAS projects and projects and programs are being felt by the men and women on the ground in our countries. And while it will be important to lean into doing work that leverages the comparative advantages of the OAS and the other tools of the inter-American system, if our efforts are to have the greatest impact, we cannot reflexively limit our imagination or the ambition of our aspirations. Let us, therefore, recommit ourselves to the work to craft an OAS and an inter-American system that reflects the dynamism of the hemisphere and that builds on the legacy and ambition of those that came before us. Providence would have it that in 1983, one year after gaining membership of this organization, the Bahamas for the first time chaired the Permanent Council and led, as we are today, by a protocolary session of the Permanent Council to celebrate Pan American Day. In that address, Ambassador Reg Wood, the presiding ambassador of the Bahamas to the United States of America and permanent representative to the OAS, spoke of a reality that rings true today. And he stated, and I quote, "Let me close these brief remarks by appealing to all of you today to take a moment on Pan American Day to reflect and ponder the fate of our organization. And more than our organization, the secretariat as an institution, the fate of all peoples of our hemisphere as well. Great challenges are before us all. And we must remember the heavy responsibility we bear for preserving peace, freedom, and justice. We must not let this day pass lightly as just another ceremony." I end the quote. "Let us dare to dream of an Americas that can and should lead the world in decarbonization." I challenge this body to build on the commitments emanating from the Inter American Meeting of Ministers of Sustainable Development held in the Bahamas last October to facilitate concrete actions which support every member state's efforts towards attaining net-zero economies, which preserve biodiversity and environmental heritage for future generations. Climate change requires an all-hands-on-deck approach, and engagement on climate action is not the sole domain of any one international organization. Among other objectives, the OAS can, for example, concretely make a difference through developing a robust climate-smart skills program that will build capacity and train thousands of youths from across the Americas in the green skills for the future of work. And given the hemisphere contains many of the most environmentally vulnerable nations on Earth, the Americas also can and should lead the world in the development of a flexible and responsive mechanism for coordination and direction of hemispheric and recovery support in the wake of disasters and natural emergencies. The Americas can and should lead the world in provision of support for the stabilization and revitalization of Haiti while ensuring our efforts are informed by the will of the Haitian people. Talking about solidarity is important but insufficient. The OAS can play a greater role in coordinating humanitarian, security, and democratic efforts, and in executing projects and programs that can bring much-needed help and hope to our brothers and sisters in Haiti. The Americas can and should lead the world on scaling effective cooperation for dismantling transnational trafficking in guns, people, and drugs that continues to endanger and destabilize our communities. And we must lead on reforming the global approach to the war on drugs so that it is no longer a war on our citizens but a war on organized crime. Returning to the very roots of the inter-American cooperation, of our inter-American cooperation, the Americas can and should prioritize promotion of enhanced commercial and trade ties between the countries of the hemisphere and support efforts of countries in the region to improve trade facilitation and connectivity. The Americas can and should lead the world on reform of the international financial architecture, including official development aid, development financing, given the inherent vulnerabilities, high indebtedness, strident inequality, and threat of financial inclusion that continues to plague most of the countries in the hemisphere, particularly small island developing states like the Bahamas. And as a hemisphere still gripped by the legacies of the original sins of slavery, racial segregation, and native genocide, the Americas can and should lead the world on advocacy for reparative justice for persons of Afrodescent, indigenous persons, and other vulnerable groups. So this is the America that I believe our citizens want. It is one that honors the legacy, struggle, and vision of our forebears. The work of building the Americas continues, but it is a work that I'm convinced we can all accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Mitchell, for your always so insightful presentations. Colleagues, before we proceed, I would like to share with all that it is an honor for me to preside over this meeting. And we stand at a critical juncture, a moment where a renewed commitment to the core principles of international law is paramount. This dedication will pave the way for a more robust, good neighborliness among our nations and a more unified and integrated organization of American states. Esteemed colleagues, before I give the floor to the distinguished coordinators of the regional groups who may wish to speak, I am also honored to share with you a text of a letter that was received from the Vice President of the United States, Her Excellency Kamala Harris, and the letters addressed to the Secretary General and myself on the occasion of this America's Day and at the start of the Pan American Week, which we are celebrating this morning. So with your kind indulgence, I'd like to read into the record the correspondence received from the Vice President of the United States. His Excellency Luis Almargollemus, Secretary General of the Organization of American States; His Excellency Chad Donovan Niemeyer, Permanent Representative of the Bahamas to the Organization of American States. Dear Mr. Secretary General and Mr. Ambassador, as we mark the occasion of Pan American Day and Week, extend my warmest greetings to you and the esteemed members of the Organization of American States. Pan American Day serves as a reminder of our shared heritage, diverse cultures, and aspirations for a brighter future. The Biden-Harris administration is deeply committed to strengthening our partnerships across the Americas and advancing democracy, human rights, citizen security, and inclusive development. Our vision for the region is one of shared prosperity and opportunity. The United States remains steadfast in our support for the Organization of American States. Through initiatives like the U.S.-Caribbean Partnership to Address the Climate Crisis 2030, PAC 2030, and our ongoing engagement through the United States Strategy to address the root causes of migration in Central America, we are working to address pressing challenges such as climate change and advance opportunities for economic growth. Together, let us continue to uphold the principles of democracy, human rights, and sustainable and inclusive development across the Americas. Sincerely, Kamala Harris. I wish to extend our sincere appreciation to the permanent mission of the United States, and in particular, to Ambassador Frank Moore for their instrumental role in facilitating the receipt of this kind letter from Vice President Harris. We are also grateful for their efforts in coordinating the commemorative events planned throughout the week, which we look forward to with great anticipation. Ambassador Moore, please ensure to convey the sincere gratitude of the Chair to Vice President Harris. Colleagues, I now'd like to present the floor to those regional coordinators and groups, and also to Canada and the United States. The floor is yours to request. I understand that there may be a problem with the requesting stations.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Assistant Secretary General, and distinguished Foreign Minister Frederick Mitchell. The United States welcomes today's commemoration of Pan American Day. It's a time to celebrate enduring bonds of cooperation and to reaffirm our commitment to the ideals of peace, prosperity, democracy throughout our hemisphere. This year, as we reflect on a number of key anniversaries that have shaped our collective regions' identity, we are reminded not only of the progress we have made, but also the challenges that persist, demanding our continued vigilance and concerted efforts. My government continues to celebrate the 75th anniversary of the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights and the American Declaration on the Rights and Duties of Man. These landmark documents serve as beacons of hope and inspiration for millions around the globe, reminding us of our collective commitment to equality, justice, and dignity, whether in Cuba, Nicaragua, and Venezuela, or right here in my own country. We also commemorate this year the 65th anniversary of the Inter American Commission on Human Rights, mindful of the pivotal role it has played and continues to play in advancing accountability, transparency, and justice throughout the Americas. Just last month, Mr. Chair, Guatemalan President Bernardo Arribalo offered a public apology on behalf of the Guatemalan government, fulfilling part of a commissioned ruling from 2014 in the case of Maria Isabel Feliz Franco, who was kidnapped and murdered in 2001. By working together to uphold the principle of the Commission's mandate, we as member states can demonstrate our strong commitment to protecting human rights and fundamental freedoms for all. My government's chairmanship of the OAS LGBTI+ Core Group, established in 2016 with the goal of advancing human rights for all, is another example of ongoing efforts undertaken by member states to support the mandate of the Commission. Mr. Chair, Mr. Foreign Minister, the legacy of Alexander Hamilton, whose journey from the Caribbean island of Neves to become a founding father of the United States serves as a relevant reminder of the diversity, determination, and shared heritage that unites us as a hemisphere. As we reflect on Hamilton's contributions this year, the 220th anniversary of his death, we are reminded of the importance of equity, inclusivity, and social protection, values he cherished dearly and which we endure today as inter-American principles. We are also proudly to celebrate in 2024 the 30th anniversary of the Summit of the Americas process, a cornerstone of regional cooperation that has provided a lasting platform for dialogue, collaboration, and partnership. Looking ahead to the 10th Summit next year, the United States remains focused on ensuring that our leaders' common commitments from the Ninth Summit in Los Angeles are realized, both in our regions' words and also in our actions. Over the past two years, working with many of you, we have complemented the Ninth Summit's commitment with additional initiatives announced by President Biden on the margins of the Ninth Summit to address pressing issues facing our hemisphere. This includes efforts to respond to the climate crisis, strengthen pandemic response resilience, foster economic growth, and address the drivers and root causes of irregular migration through the U.S.-Caribbean Partnership to Address the Climate Crisis PAC 2030; the Americas Health Corps; the Americas Partnership for Economic Prosperity, also known as APEP; and the Los Angeles Declaration on Migration and Protection. We also hosted last April the First City Summit of the Americas in Denver, underscoring the importance of local leadership in addressing common challenges, driving progress, and fostering inclusive development. And I want to recognize the Government of the Dominican Republic for working with us to advance on the outcomes from the First City Summit as we look to both the 10th Summit and the Second City Summit of the Americas. Mr. Chair, the Inter American Democratic Charter calls upon us to work toward responsive and effective governance for all. And the efforts of our new voluntary group to follow up on the Democratic Charter is actively engaged on ways to respond to the multifaceted challenges facing today's democracy. This work is needed more now than ever. To this point, we must acknowledge the pressing crises unfolding in Nicaragua and in Haiti, which demand this council's attention and concerted action. As we commence Pan American Week today, colleagues, the United States welcomes and recognizes the enduring impact of cultural exchange in fostering understanding and cooperation among our nations. Such exchanges, from music to education, have long been a key element of the United States' engagement with the Americas stemming from the era of the Pan American Union. And I'd like to thank and think about Dr. Leo Rowe, our truest citizen of the Americas, as he was known, would be thrilled to know that such collaboration continues to thrive here at the OAS. His legacy, Dr. Lowe's legacy, shines bright and endures. Let me close by recalling the words of former Vice President and Assistant Secretary of State Nelson Rockefeller, who throughout his life championed cultural cooperation and diplomatic understanding within the hemisphere. Following his historic tour of 20 nations of the Americas in 1969, Rockefeller observed the following. He said, and I quote, "The fundamental question for the United States is how it can cooperate to help meet the basic needs of the people of the hemisphere despite philosophical disagreements. disagreements. It must seek pragmatic ways to help people." End of quote. Mr. Chair and fellow delegations, as we face the new challenges of the 21st century, let us do so mindful of this call to focus on building a brighter future for all people of the Americas, regardless of ideology, race, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
And thank you very much to the delegation of the United States. I now recognize and offer the floor to the delegation of Guyana. Guyana, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Frederick Mitchell, Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Bahamas, Assistant Secretary General, PR colleagues, observers, and invitees. We commemorate Pan American Day at a critical juncture in the life of our organization. The vision that brought us to our present-day structure and the OAS Charter must continue to guide us. It is therefore necessary that the OAS remains a forum to facilitate discussions and actions on delivering political, social, and economic progress and development to the peoples of the Americas. This occasion gives us the opportunity to undertake a process of reflection and celebration of the successes of the region, our relations with each other, which has led us collectively through the ambits of this very organization, to take bold steps in addressing our shared challenges. A continuing challenge is to make steadily more perfect the aspirations first formally expressed by the then-new young nation of the United States of America, that all men and women are born equal. Our annual weeks for Afro descendants and indigenous people manifest our awareness that we still have some ways to go to overcome our histories in displacing the indigenous peoples who were here and our history of enslaving Africans. We must work to make these weeks vestiges of a past era. We should not hesitate, however, to affirm that there has been much progress, that through greater awareness, programs of affirmative action, and diversity, Afro descendants across the Americas are coming alongside other people. We acknowledge the various movements to dissipate the legacy of slavery and reiterate the Caribbean region's call for reparations. Also, we can sense over the last decades the drive of indigenous peoples to take their appropriate part in the government in the countries in which they have been living. It is in such a light that we can see the recent struggles and the change of government in Guatemala, and we in the OAS can be happy about our significant contribution in enabling the peaceful transition which eventually occurred there. Chair, for us in the English-speaking Caribbean, we need to learn more about and get closer to the Spanish-speaking countries and Brazil. Coming out of different imperial systems, we have different histories, and many of the heroes we were taught about in the English system and still in our blood, Sir Francis Drake, Morgan, these were villains to the Spanish. Our Caribbean people must become fluent in the Caribbean languages and more familiar with the history of the Latin American countries, our sisters and brothers of today. As a first step in Guyana, where President has called on our Education Ministry, to take steps that in a not-too-distant time, all Guyanese must be able to converse to some degree in Spanish. Even as we focus on strengthening cultural aspects of interactions, we must also focus on meeting the need in small developing states for climate financing to survive climate change. In addressing these challenges, we must also remain focused on strengthening multilateralism. Small states, such as those of the Caribbean community, rely on an international system based on respect for and compliance with the rule of law, given its integral connection to peace and prosperity. We join in the commemoration of Pan American Day and reinforce our commitment to building a secure, stable, and peaceful Americas grounded in cultural diversity, the protection and preservation of human rights, and the delivery of democracy and social equity for the citizens of today and tomorrow of this hemisphere. And Chair, as we meet here today, we cannot but think of what is happening on our world. And as we recall that we have amongst us people from all parts of our world, it must be on a background of one world, one human race, in all of our physiological appearances, in all the diversities of our physiological appearances, languages, histories, religions, and cultures, it must be on that background that we celebrate Pan American Day. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, His Excellency Heinz and Guyana. The Chair recognizes and offers the floor to the delegation of Panama. Panama, floor is yours.
Gracias, señor presidente. Señor ministro de Relaciones Exteriores de la Mancomunidad de las Bahamas, Frederick Mitchell, señor presidente del Consejo Permanente de la OEA, embajador Chet Donovan Niemeyer, señor secretario general adjunto, embajador Nestor Méndez, representantes permanentes e interinos, observadores permanentes. Buenos días a todos y todas. Me honra tomar la palabra en nombre de Belice, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, República Dominicana, y Panamá, países miembros del sistema de la integración centroamericana SICA acreditados ante la organización de los Estados Americanos. Agradecemos la valiosa presentación del señor ministro de Relaciones Exteriores de la Mancomunidad de las Bahamas, su Excelencia Fredrick Mitchell, de la cual hemos tomado de vida nota. Nos reunimos hoy para conmemorar el Día de las Américas y la Semana Panamericana, momentos significativos que nos invitan a reflexionar sobre nuestra identidad compartida y el compromiso con la paz y la cooperación en nuestro continente. Desde el norte hasta el sur, nuestra región está impregnada de una riqueza cultural y natural incomparable. Cada país aporta su historia, tradiciones, aspiraciones, enriqueciendo el tapiz que nos define como americanos. En este espacio de encuentro, recordemos el ideario panamericano de solidaridad, valor fundamental arraigado en nuestra historia común. Desde aquel histórico Congreso Anfitiónico de Panamá convocado por el libertador Simón Bolívar en 1826 hasta la creación de la Organización de los Estados Americanos en 1948, hemos tejido un entramado jurídico e institucional destinado a promover la paz, la libertad, y la justicia en nuestro continente. A través del diálogo franco y el respeto mutuo, hemos alcanzado acuerdos fundamentales para el desarrollo y la integración regional. En esta semana panamericana, bajo el lema "Promoviendo la equidad social y la diplomacia para la paz", diplomacia cultural y del jazz en las Américas, celebramos el poder transformador de la diplomacia cultural, en esta ocasión a través del jazz, como expresión artística que nos une, trascendiendo fronteras y promoviendo el entendimiento mutuo. Agradecemos a la misión permanente de los Estados Unidos de América ante la OEA y a su embajador Frank Mora, su compromiso con esta celebración y su iniciativa para que podamos disfrutar de una serie de eventos a lo largo del mes de abril. Una propuesta cultural que nos permitirá experimentar el poder transformador de la diplomacia cultural, especialmente a través del jazz, y al mismo tiempo recrear el espíritu de colaboración que nos ha guiado desde la primera Conferencia Internacional Americana en 1890. En este día del panamericanismo, rendimos homenajes a la visión de nuestros antecesores, quienes sentaron las bases para una comunidad de naciones unidas en su diversidad. Recordemos el espíritu visionario de aquellos fundadores de la OEA. Sigamos su legado trabajando juntos y juntas para fortalecer la cooperación y el respeto recíproco entre todas las naciones del continente americano. Que esta celebración panamericana nos inspire a seguir trabajando juntos y juntas por un continente inclusivo y próspero, y que la equidad social y la diplomacia para la paz sean nuestros principios rectores en este camino que transitamos hacia un futuro compartido. Señor presidente, solicitando su indulgencia y la venia de mis colegas, permítame decir unas breves palabras a título nacional. Me ha correspondido el honor de suplir a nuestro coordinador regional, quien se encuentra atendiendo otra misión en mi calidad de decana de los estados miembros del SICA representados en la OEA. Pero como panameña, no quiero dejar pasar la ocasión para compartir con ustedes en esta sesión que mi país se está preparando para la celebración del bicentenario del Congreso Anfitiónico de 1826, con el impulso de la sociedad bolivariana de Panamá y el decidido apoyo de la canciller Yanaina Teguany. Preparación que incluye la aspiración de ser sede de la Asamblea General de la OEA ese año. De hecho, este mismo año se cumplen 200 de aquel 7 de septiembre de 1824, fecha de la convocatoria que hiciera Simón Bolívar para aquella asamblea confederal que perseguía el sueño de unidad e independencia. Convocatoria que especialmente recordamos como panameños y panameñas por la referencia hecha, que cito: "Si el mundo hubiese de elegir su capital, el ismo de Panamá sería señalado para este Augusto Destino, colocado como está en el centro del globo." Sí, históricamente Panamá fungido como punto de encuentro, uniendo al mundo con nuestra posición geográfica y conectividad. Hemos sido un país abierto a la riqueza cultural del mundo y hemos recibido grandes olas migratorias para la construcción de dos grandes hitos de la ruta transísmica, especialmente de los países del Caricón aquí representados. Gracias a ello, somos hoy el país diverso, orgulloso, y multicultural. Mi delegación comparte la premisa propuesta por la delegación de Estados Unidos para la celebración de la Semana Panamericana. La diplomacia cultural es la diplomacia para la paz, y nuestra región es una región de paz. Es así como nos comprometimos durante esta gestión que está por terminar con el proyecto de diplomacia cultural, memoria colectiva, e identidad, para honrar a nuestros ancestros y ancestras que migraron para construir tanto el ferrocarril como el canal. Y en esa memoria colectiva panafrolatina, hay piezas de la construcción de ese maravilloso movimiento musical transnacional que hoy es el jazz global, que se convirtió en un poderoso símbolo por la equidad y la justicia. Ese jazz global, que es el resultado de la fusión de ritmos, sonoridades, e influencias provenientes de toda nuestra región, desde los timbres y las síncope del Caribe hasta las melodías y armonías de los Andes, Centroamérica y México. Reitero los votos formulados a nombre de mis colegas del Grupo Regional SICA representados en la OEA. Sigamos construyendo todos los puentes de entendimiento que sean necesarios para alcanzar paz y la máxima realización de derechos para nuestros pueblos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much to the delegation of Panama. The Chair sees the requests, recognizes the requests from the distinguished delegation of Mexico. Ambassador Váñez, floor is yours.
Gracias, señor presidente. Los países del Grupo 10 saludamos la conmemoración del Día de las Américas y la Semana Panamericana, y tomamos nota de las presentaciones realizadas en esta sesión, en la que nos honra con su presencia el ministro de Relaciones Exteriores de la Comunidad de las Bahamas, Frederick Mitchell. El 14 de abril de cada año reconocemos la fundación de la Unión Internacional de República Americanas en 1890, que luego se transformó en la Unión Panamericana y en 1948 en la OEA, creada por los Estados para lograr un orden de paz y de justicia, fomentar su solidaridad, robustecer su colaboración, y defender su soberanía, su integridad territorial, y su independencia. En esta conmemoración, refrendamos nuestro compromiso con la democracia, los derechos humanos, y el desarrollo, así como con los propósitos y principios establecidos en la Carta de la OEA, con un multilateralismo efectivo que mediante el diálogo y la cooperación permita dar respuesta a las principales demandas y necesidades de nuestros pueblos, como la desigualdad económica, social, y de género, la discriminación, la construcción de capacidades para mitigar los efectos del cambio climático, las causas estructurales de la migración, la violencia, y la inseguridad, entre otros. Señor presidente, nuestro grupo agradece a la misión permanente de Estados Unidos por la iniciativa de conmemorar esta fecha, con un destacado y robusto programa cultural enfocado en la promoción de la justicia social y la diplomacia para la paz, temas fundamentales de la agenda de nuestra organización. Nuestro grupo reafirma su compromiso con la Carta de la OEA, el sistema interamericano, y los ideales compartidos de paz, justicia, y desarrollo para todas y todos. Gracias, presidente.
Thank you very much to the distinguished delegation of Mexico. I see no further requests for the floor. I'd like to thank those delegations for your valuable interventions. As we cast our eyes upon the flags proudly displayed in the hall of heroines and heroes of the Americas, let us hope that one day all nations of the Americas will once again be seated at this table, actively contributing to the betterment of the hemisphere. With this, colleagues, we conclude the protocolary meeting for this afternoon. I thank everyone for their presence. This protocolary is hereby adjourned.